Good evening and welcome to the Monday, November 17th edition of the Lake Forest City Council. The city clerk called the roll.
Certainly, Honorable Mayor.
Here.
Alderman Novitt.
Here.
Alderman Clemens.
Here.
Alderman Notes.
Here.
Alderman Powers.
Here.
Alderman Levert.
Here.
Alderman Bathfeld.
Here.
Alderman Weber will be joining us shortly.
Alderman Walther.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
Perfect, please rise and join me for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. To the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty. First item on the agenda is comments by Mayor. First thing we'd like to do is thank everybody for coming to the ribbon-cutting ceremony. Even though the weather was a little dicey, it was pretty cool, well-attended, and I hope you all like it. Bank Lane Deer Path turned out really well, and once again, we appreciate all the work of the staff. Incredible job there. Okay, next item is motion for the board and commission appointments and reappointments. This will be Cemetery Commission Matty Dugan, this is an appointment, and Eric Seabird to the Board of Trustees Police Pension Board. Can I have a motion to approve the appointments?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Goes ahead. Mr. City Manager, you are next.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. Good evening. I have one item for my report tonight, and that's our community spotlight. And for this evening's community spotlight, I am pleased to welcome officials from Northwestern Katherine Gratz Griffin Lake Forest Hospital. I think I got that right. Specifically pleased to welcome Seamus Collins, the President of the Hospital, Dr. Jeffrey Copen, the VP and Chief Medical Officer, and Anne King, Director of Operations. I think as the whole council was able to observe on a tour earlier today, it goes without saying that there's a lot of activity happening right now on the hospital campus. It's a really exciting time, not just for the hospital, but for our community as well. And so, happy to invite President Collins and Dr. Copen up to the podium to share what's happening, to provide some updates on the quality and scope of care available at our local community hospital.
Jason, thank you very much. Mayor Tack, members of the City Council, just want to start by saying how grateful I am for the opportunity to be here and share an update on what's going on with Katherine Gratz Griffin, Lake Forest Hospital. Since I joined the Lake Forest Executive Team in 2017, I really have had the pleasure of witnessing something pretty special, and that's the collaboration between this community and the healthcare provider, Lake Forest Hospital at the time. And just see the power that can come from a community that's investing in the health of its people. More and more people in our community and the region are turning to Lake Forest Hospital for care. You can see, we are ranked number eight in Illinois by U.S. News and World Report with four nationally-ranked specialties. A reflection of the amazing quality of care that's happening at our hospital on a daily basis, and a reflection of the clinical quality and the partnership with Northwestern Medicine. We're also ranked, given a grade by A by Leapfrog, and five stars by CMS for our safety. Another metric we typically look at is a grade, is Visient, who recognizes this year as a leader in quality healthcare. The relationship between the city and Lake Forest Hospital goes back to the many, many decades, more than 100 years. The affiliation with Northwestern Medicine in 2010 was a turning point for healthcare in this community. In 2014, the city approved a master land use plan that set forward a path for us to continue to advance and modernize the delivery of healthcare to this community. And we've continued to grow and move forward. And I can say, as a person who has been part of a number of committees related to growing our campus, that every partnership that has existed between the city and the hospital has really led to a higher-quality product for us as we move forward. And we're excited that in just a few short months, in February 2026, we'll be activating an expansion of our hospital that will double the size of our hospital. To put some numbers to it, you can see here that our emergency department will be increasing in size by three times. Today, we're licensed for 114 beds, and when this project is complete, we'll have 260 care spaces, a reflection of the continued investment by Northwestern Medicine into this community. Our critical care beds will increase from 12 to 24, and a total square footage of almost 300,000 square feet will be invested in this community. More than 150 new employees will be joining the Lake Forest team as we continue to grow and advance the delivery of care to this community. A few years ago, Northwestern Medicine set a path for our strategic plan, a plan that really guides us as we move forward and continue to make investments throughout our health system. We aim to deliver world-class care and experience. We aim to advance medical knowledge and discovery. We aim to provide a superior environment for our clinicians and care teams so that they can do their best work. We look to deepen our relationships with the communities that we serve, and we look to fund that mission as we move forward and reinvest in our communities. What does that mean for Lake Forest, and what does that mean for us? We're continue to be committed to our identity as a community hospital, a hospital that is deeply committed to providing a seamless experience for our patients, and providing high-quality clinical care that you typically see at a community hospital. Our relationship with Northwestern Medicine also allows us to advance world-class clinical programs right here in Lake Forest. People in Lake Forest will no longer need to leave this community to advance the subs, to access the advanced subspecialized care that we can offer at Northwestern Medicine. We're also able to bring the academics and research of Northwestern Medicine right here to Lake Forest through clinical trials and training that next generation of healthcare professionals that will be caring for our communities going forward. And lastly, we look to establish a culture within our community and within our workforce that allows us to achieve these goals. And so, I'd like to introduce my colleague, Dr. Jeffrey Copen, who's going to touch a little bit in more detail and provide some examples of how we're actually doing that on a day-to-day basis at our hospital.
Thank you, Seamus, and good evening, everybody. What I'd like to say is, as beautiful as our hospital is on the outside, and it is magnificent, what we do on the inside is even better. And I want to share this evening some of the things that are going on clinically within our hospital. The first thing is, we need to provide top-notch emergency care to our community, and we're doing that. This is the leadership you see here, Doctors Malik, Epstein, and Loftus. Over the last year, we took a very critical look at the whole ER experience, and we realized we need to do better, and we did. By making certain changes in our staffing, the way that we deal with patient throughput in the emergency room, we were able to use a number of innovative advancements that Northwestern Medicine and other colleagues around the country have used to improve the emergency experience. And we have real data that shows that the experience that our patients have in our emergency department has not only improved statistically, it's improved much more than we ever thought we'd be able to pull off within the current environment, and that's really because of the leadership of these gentlemen you see here, together with some of their nursing colleagues. In addition, one of the things we're very proud of is we know that emergency medicine care does not begin in the emergency room. It has to begin if a patient is going to have contact with emergency medical services in the field, and here in Lake Forest, that means our very talented and committed fire department. We have a program where we partner with Lake Forest Fire Department Emergency Services and a number of others, actually 10 municipalities in the area. We're using what I like to call our northwestern-ness, our ability to train and to teach. We provide the training for the emergency medicine people that serve our community. What we've been able to accomplish is pre-hospital care that is among the best in the country, and I see that we have one of our colleagues here. It's really something. We have been able to decrease the time of diagnosis of a very serious heart attack called a STEMI by more than eight minutes because of what our EMS folks are able to do in the field. Every time we can do that, we're literally saving millions of heart cells because our team is ready to go the moment the patient comes to the emergency room to provide life-saving care. The same thing with strokes. We have trained our colleagues in the emergency medicine, emergency, the emergency services within the fire departments to identify strokes, to communicate with our ER, and what we're able to do is we're literally, every year, we save millions of brain cells of patients having strokes. This is extraordinary, and it's because of the partnership that my colleague Mike Peters and his staff has with the EMS teams of the municipalities here in the area. Community hospital means we have to provide the very best experience in women's care, particularly maternity services, and we're doing that. Dr. Adrian Adams, together with Dr. Michael Hubbell, who's been in our community for many, many years, they lead a women's health team that is absolutely top-notch, and I'm very proud to share that just last week, they went to a meeting of the Consortium of Illinois Maternity Hospitals, and they received the award for top quality in maternity services in the state. It's really something. We're very, very proud of that. We're in the top echelon of maternity hospitals in the state of Illinois. The services that we're able to provide are the services of academic medical centers, Dr. Garb in minimally invasive gynecology, Dr. Dong in uro-gynecology, and now we have full-time maternal fetal medicine, supporting our general obstetricians here in Lake Forest. In primary care, and I know that this is a vexing problem for so many people, we spend lots of time recruiting primary care. These folks here in Lake Forest and Lake Bluff, my colleagues, represent the very best in primary care, and as you can see from the map, we provide primary care now in six different locations within our north suburban communities. When it comes to specialty care, we're able to leverage what Northwestern Medicine does. And Northwestern Medicine is truly a leader in world-class specialty care. Here in Lake Forest, our cardiac team has done things that are literally the first to be done anywhere in Northwestern Medicine, and that includes downtown at Northwestern Memorial. We're the first in NM to do something called a dual-chamber leadless pacemaker, and I assure you, it's every bit as impressive as it sounds. The way that we use ion-assisted robotic bronchoscopy in order to detect early lung cancer, where we can treat it without chemotherapy, without anything other than minimally invasive treatment, and then, I'm going to see if I can make this work. So this is three-dimensional transesophageal echocardiogram. The probe that the cardiologist is using here is in the esophagus, the food tube, that literally abuts anatomically this heart valve. This allows us to treat this valve with minimally invasive techniques, no surgery that has to cut open the chest wall. Not a lot of places can do this, and we're able to do it here in Lake Forest. The importance of bringing academic medicine, including research and teaching, to Lake Forest Hospital, this is what makes us Northwestern Medicine. Many of you know, we have our own family medicine residency program. We're currently training 24 future family medicine residents here in Lake Forest. We have a clinical trials unit now, where we're able to bring the cutting-edge clinical trials from downtown up here to Lake Forest to our community, so our patients do not need to go downtown any longer to participate in these trials. We're very optimistic about where this is going to go. We're going to have lots of specialties. We see about 10 specialties that are prime for clinical trials. In order to do this, we needed to create something that we'd never had before in a community like Lake Forest, and we're going to have a cutting-edge clinical research team here in the Lake Forest community. So, I think the bottom line is, as you watch that amazing building complete now, you know, the exterior is now done, and the members of our council were able to see some, only some, of what we have on the inside. I want to stress that the clinical activity, the clinical programs that we're able to bring, these are the very best anywhere in the country, and we're going to continue to build that here in Lake Forest. And we thank this entire community for its partnership. We would not be able to accomplish what we do, Northwestern Medicine here in Lake Forest, without the partnership of our wonderful Lake Forest community. So thank you for that. And if there's any questions, we're happy to take them.
Any questions for Mr. Collins or Dr. Copen? All right. Well, listen, gentlemen, thank you very much, and thanks for everything you do. Oh, did you have one?
Just a thank you. Having this resource in our community, I mean, we chose to move here 20 years ago, and if I was faced with that decision today to move to Lake Forest, it would be a slam dunk because of the resources you provide our community and the citizens who live here. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor, and that concludes my report for the evening.
All right. The next item is an opportunity for citizens to address the council. Is there anyone present who would like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to committee reports. The first report is from the Finance Committee. Consideration of an Ordinance Establishing the 2025 Tax Levy, first reading. This will be presented by Katie Skibby, Finance Director.
All right, thank you, Mayor Tack. The 2025 property tax levy is for you tonight for the first reading. This tax levy was first discussed at the October 20 Finance Committee, and then the non-binding estimate was approved on the November 3 City Council Meeting. And last week, we went into quite a bit of detail at the Capital Budget Finance Committee Workshop. Tonight, I have included those worksheets in your packet, but then just provided a summary here for you all. This slide up here shows you the amounts that we are levying in all the different categories, including operations, capital, debt, and then the city also levies the property taxes for the Lake Forest Library. The proposed overall increase is 4.51% over last year's levy. Just a couple items to highlight. The 2025 tax levy does continue to phase in the debt service for the new police facility. The capital improvement levy was increased by $500,000 in the 2024 tax levy, and the 2025 tax levy, we will reduce the capital improvements levy by $500,000, and that will somewhat offset the increase in the debt levy for the police station project. And then, per discussions with the City Council, we are also including an abatement of that debt service of $230,000 to further reduce the 2025 tax impact and to further phase in the increase. We do typically phase in increases over three years, and we are currently in year two of that phasing in. And then, the second thing to highlight is the general levy, which supports all operations, is increasing 2% in 2025. This is the fourth consecutive year that the general operating levy will be increasing less than the rate of inflation. The 2024 increase to the Consumer Price Index was 2.9%, which is higher than 2%.
It is.
Moving on, here is the estimated household impact. The average household with a home with a market value of $1 million will see an increase in their taxes of $164.88. The city remains about 2% of the, I'm sorry, 22% of the tax bill, and the library is about 3%. You'll also notice that the city's equalized assessed valuation increased by 8.1%, and therefore, the city's tax rate will decrease from 1.5 to 1.44. This graph shows you the uses of property tax revenues, and what goes to operating, debt, capital, pensions, and parks and recreation. We also are showing a graph with the 2009 tax levy, and you'll see that the categories remain relatively stable, except in two categories. The capital improvement levy wasn't part of the tax levy in 2009, but has been a great asset for the city for their pay-as-you-go capital funding. And then pension funding has taken a bigger chunk of the pie since 2009, and that is due to the public safety funding changes that we have made to help pay off the city's unamortized liability, excuse me. And the tax levy is in your packet for your consideration for the first reading.
Hearing none, then, I am going to ask for a motion to grant first reading of an ordinance establishing the 2025 tax levy. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
This would be a roll-call vote.
Alderman Clemens.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Notes.
Oh, I said aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not hear you. Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Levert.
Aye.
Alderman Bathfeld.
Aye.
Alderman Walder.
Aye.
Alderman Novitt.
Aye.
Seven yays, zero nay, motion carries.
All right, the next item will also be presented by Director Skibby. This is approval of ordinances abating 2025 tax levies for various geo-alternate revenue bond issues, first reading.
Okay, the city has historically issued all debt as general obligation debt. This allows us, this allows us to take advantage of our AAA bond rating, as well as having the full faith and credit of the entire city's revenue streams, including property tax, behind the issuance, which then allows us to have the lowest interest rates and lowest issuance costs. However, sometimes when we issue debt, we do not intend to pay for it with property taxes. So, for example, the 2017 issuance was for improvements to the water plant, and when we issued that debt, we intended to use water revenues to pay for the debt payments, and so, we abate the bonds or reduce the debt service levy for that issuance so that we then use water revenues to pay for it. This year, there are three abatements, two of which that we are asking you to approve this evening. One is the 2017 bond for the water improvement plant, and one is the 2015 issuance where a portion of that bond is related to the TIF and is paid for with the TIF increment. The third abatement is for the police station bonds. These bonds will not be issued until January, so when they are issued, that bond ordinance will include language to abate the first payment by 230,000. So that is why you see two instead of three this evening. So, in your packet are two ordinances abating the debt service levy, and what you see here for the net levy is what we just approved first reading of for the tax levy. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Director Skibby? If there's anyone in the public that would like to address this matter? Okay, hearing none, then, may I have a motion? Approve ordinances abating 2025 tax levies for various geo-alternate revenue bond issues, first reading.
So moved.
This will be a roll-call vote.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Levert.
Aye.
Alderman Bathfeld.
Aye.
Alderman Walder.
Aye.
Alderman Novitt.
Aye.
Alderman Clemens.
Aye.
Seven yays, zero nay, motion carries.
Okay, and we have to move on so we get Finance Committee done before the Finance Chairman arrives. All right, the third item will be presented by Dan Hall. Diane Hall, Consideration of an Ordinance Approving a Fee Schedule.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Included in your packet is a list of the current city fees. There are different highlights for changes to the fees. Yellow are proposed changes by departments. There are, there's one fee that is highlighted in green, and this is just a change to the fee where it goes with current practices. We are happy to report there are no new fees proposed this year. This slide just shows a summary of the projected revenue generated by the changes in fee. And we are requesting first reading. These were reviewed at the budget meeting last week also, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Other questions or comments? Director Hall? No, is there anyone in the public who would like to address this matter? Seeing none, I would like to ask for a motion to grant first reading of an ordinance approving the fee schedule.
So moved.
Second.
This will be a roll-call vote.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Levert.
Aye.
Alderman Bathfeld.
Aye.
Alderman Walder.
Aye.
Alderman Novitt.
Aye.
Alderman Clemens.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Seven yays, zero nay, motion carries.
Excellent, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is a presentation from the Environmental Sustainability Committee. This will be presented by Kerry Cowpey, Excitation of an Ordinance Approving a Recommendation from Environmental Sustainability Committee Amending City Code Section 135.108, titled "Noise Generally." First reading enough desired by the City Council, final approval.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Night before you is for your consideration, an ordinance amending the allowable noise hours for landscaping equipment. So at our October 20 meeting, council had discussion regarding the current landscape equipment noise hours and the recommendation from ESC to further limit those hours. As a reminder, our current hours for landscaping equipment are Monday through Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m., Saturday, 8 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., and Sundays and holidays, 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. The ordinance for your consideration tonight would reduce the weekday hours by 30 minutes to end at 7 p.m. instead of 7:30 p.m. This puts us in line with This puts us in line with the majority of the communities around us for weekday end times at 7 p.m. The ordinance also reduces the current Saturday hours by one hour in the morning to start at 9 a.m. instead of 8 a.m. and to reduce by 30 minutes in the evening to end at 5 p.m. instead of 5:30 p.m. Sundays and holidays would be prohibited altogether, which is consistent with the six communities that are highlighted on this part. The ordinance also does include an exception for residents to be able to use landscaping equipment outside of the general noise hours. So resident hours would remain as they are today, listed on the bottom of the slide. And if the ordinance is approved, city staff would implement a communication strategy to include notifying all of the landscaping companies as part of the licensing process, which begins in January. We would also update our webpage with the new information and utilize our normal communication channels such as the e-news, social media, and the dialogue to spread that word. We also would make a targeted outreach to our homeowners associations so they're aware of the changes and can communicate as well with their contractors and with the residents. And so, if determined to be appropriate by council tonight, we're asking to waive the first reading and grant final approval of the ordinance to amend the allowable hours for the lawn maintenance equipment. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Are there questions or comments for Ms. Cowpey? Come on. Okay, is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this matter? Now, I have a question, just a thought, because I know it comes up, and here we're just talking about hours, and I know it always comes up, the issues of, you know, regulating gas-powered leaf blowers, et cetera, which we've found to be sort of impractical at this point. Has there been any consideration given to limiting use of gas-powered lawn equipment for non-professional landscaping, meaning for homeowners themselves, where typically it tends to be smaller lots that are more amenable to use of things like electric leaf blowers and electric mowers? Just a question.
Sure. So, from the ESC perspective, we haven't talked about regulating that. We do talk a lot about our options for education for our residents, letting them know the differences between the noise and the emissions from the different types of equipment, but from a regulation perspective, no, we have not considered putting forth any ordinance like that.
Okay, fair enough. Anything else?
No.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to grant first reading of an ordinance of, oop, I was on the wrong thing. Move on to sustainability. I'd like to ask for a motion to waive first reading and grant final approval of an ordinance amending the Code Section 135.108(c) titled "Noise Generally" to amend the allowable hours for the use of noise generating lawn maintenance equipment.
So moved.
Second. This will be a roll call vote.
Alderman Kurt?
Aye.
Alderman Bothbeld?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Bothbeld?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Bothbeld?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
So that's why we're estimating one to two years. The other tricky part is, is if we were to go this route and push it two years, in 2028 is when we're hoping to do Waukegan and Everett, and I don't think we want to do both of these projects at the same time. So if you, if you do look at this option, it would either be trying to expedite it and try to do the water main repairs over the next year, so we can do, do the intersection still next year. Otherwise, the intersection could potentially push three years, so that we avoid having it the same time as Waukegan and Everett. So that's really the bulk of the discussion for the water main, and probably the larger discussion on this item tonight. So with that, I can take any questions.
Are there questions? We'll start with Alderman and Levert.
Can you go back one slide, please?
Yeah, of course.
Thank you. So I'm trying to understand the third option. So is the third option, the cost and the terms related strictly to replacing the water main?
Yeah. I'm glad you brought that up. I did kind of gloss over the cost, so, the, which is probably pretty important. So, the third option, there's a couple of different technologies. We could line it, which we do on sewers quite a bit. We have not done it on water mains very often. I believe we've only done it one time. The cost of lining the water main from, like, there's a T under the intersection from here to here, because what we're trying to do is basically get it outside of the pavement limits, so that on a future project, we're not having to dig this back up. The lining in this purple area would be around $400, $450,000, but there's no design yet. We have been contacting different companies that specialize in this. There's only a few that do. We do have some preliminary pricing, but there's no design yet. And then, the other number there, that $800,000, would be for like, full replacement. I refer to not having the full data. The other part is, you know, if we went ahead and replaced it, what size are we replacing it as? Are we replacing it at the 14-inch that it currently is? Or do we want to do like, a study in this area, because it's close to the booster station, and determine, hey, if we are going to replace this, do we go ahead and replace it up to a 16-inch? So that like, for future projects, if we were going to do it to, like, replace to the east eventually to a 16-inch, then this would be the time to do it as well. So, what I'm trying to say with that is, if we do go the replacement route, there might have to be some, like, additional study as well, just to make sure that we're up, like, replacing it with the correct size, if we chose to not replace it with the same size.
And is this directly tied to the intersection change?
Yeah, so, the map here, in the black, that is the resurfacing limits associated with the project that's going out to bid with the state. The part that we're really focusing on with the water main is really, I'm going to call it like, inside the box, basically like, the box of the intersection. But because we're resurfacing all the way over here, the idea was to basically follow the purple and get either the lining or the pipe all the way out to those limits, so that, let's say in two years, we come back and we want to redo that 14-inch that broke, that we're just picking up here on the east end, and not coming back and like, digging up some of the resurfacing to tie in to where we left off.
But, to your question, Alderman Levert, this was not contemplated as of, you know, six weeks ago as part of this project at all. So, again, to the degree, we assess condition of water mains, as of today, it's really looking at age of the pipe and any frequency of main breaks. This section of pipe itself has not had any main breaks, but the risk assessment and all of this is that, as we go through this project, there's always possibility, whether it be through a conscious choice to replace the pipe, or to work on main breaks, that you're tearing up portions of a road that were recently resurfaced, particularly in the intersection. And there's no right or wrong answer to this. But obviously, the downside of pursuing potential replacement, as Byron has said, is not only delaying the project, pushing it out, but you're going to have cost escalations that will come with delaying the project. And so we just wanted to eyes wide open, have this conversation with the council, in light of what we experienced six weeks ago.
Byron, is this testing, this $55,000, is that the same testing that you had talked about at the workshop, where we would include some funding to, you know, use this new technology to try things?
Exactly.
So, if that's, okay. I think this is an excellent way to test and see if that new technology works well, and, and is worth its, worth the money for the rest of the system that you're planning to test.
Yep. I mean, the data itself should be objective, and it should be able to stand on its own. The other argument would be, if we do the data collection, we now only have this area to compare it to, but I think what you said is a good point of, before we invest a couple hundred thousand, you can at least see kind of how the data worked out for the smaller area, if you want to look at it that way.
Alderman notes.
Thank you, Byron. And I think you've done a great job looking into the options that were raised at Public Works. In my mind, you know, right now, we're faced with a situation, we don't know whether those pipes are in good shape or bad shape.
Correct.
And, the cost, the cost to evaluate the integrity of that pipe being only $55,000 is, in my mind, a drop in the bucket relative to the cost of ripping up a perfectly good road in a year or two, and going in eyes wide open in January, you know, early January, knowing the results of that study, is money well spent. Then we can make our go/no-go decision on whether it makes sense to delay the intersection worth to repair that or not, and we'll just be much better educated in that decision.
I have another question.
Alderman Levert again.
Thank you. Being the experts in being Public Works, do you feel one option is better than another of the three choices presented?
You know, I'm, I always like having data. And I, you know, I'm conservative in nature in some way. I'm sure my boss is probably chuckling. I mean, obviously, proceeding with the project as-is, we all want that to happen, right? We put in 10 years to get to this point, but I think the idea of getting some additional data to confirm that's the right choice, you know, that, I think, I think that would, would be worth the cost, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Alderman Powers.
I think we should definitely delay the main project to take a look at this more seriously. I don't think we can afford another, you know, water boil order, particularly for our restaurants and businesses, and at the least of which is our, our senior community in town. Excuse me. Director Thomas wheeled in a pipe that clearly looked to be 76-years-old, that has already broken on this line at least twice in a year, right? We had it last January, I think, and then we just had the most recent issue. You know, the study's great, that's a safe way to do it, but my gut tells me, this is a 76-year-old water main. We went through the same discussion with Deer Path, we wanted to replace that to avoid a problem, once we invested the money to redo the streetscape, which I thought was a wise thing to do. I don't see that this is any different. We're going to be at a point, whether it's this year or five years from now, we're going to have to replace this water main. So I would, I would rely on the Public Works team and committee, you know, to further evaluate whether or not the replacement time should be now, and just get it done, and then be better prepared down the road to do the IDOT project. Because based upon what I saw with my own eyes a month or so ago, this is going to be an ongoing issue that should be, should be taken care of.
If I could just jump in on that point, I think it is certainly our hope that going through the testing and developing that dataset will provide clarity. In an ideal world, if it says fairly clearly, this is a pipe that should be replaced within the next five years, I think that makes for an easy solution. The flip side is, if the assessment is, well, maybe you have another 15 years left, we know ultimately, the pipe has to be replaced at some point, but what we really lack, as Byron said, in terms of data, is if it was, say, we had another 15 to 20 years of life expectancy, given that we have limited resources within our Water Capital Fund to replace infrastructure, are there other pipes that are in more immediate need of, of replacement, that would need to be replaced within less than 10 years? And again, we hope we'll get that type of clarity from the report, but there is also the possibility, because we lack that comparative data, as Byron said, that we may not have exactly the clarity we would hope.
Alderman Novit.
Thank you. Byron, you said that there was a possibility that we could line the pipe instead of replacing it?
Correct, yeah.
How would, how would that impact the timing on the, on the repaving project, and how, how would that be done if it didn't impact the timing on the repaving project?
Yeah, so if we were to delay the project, intersection project, a year, I, I think certainly, we would be able to kind of work through that design process and get prices for lining, and line it prior to, you know, doing this intersection, let's say, in, in 2027. What we're still kind of working on with, you know, a couple contractors that I mentioned earlier, was, what exactly does it look like when you line? So, I know replacement, obviously, is very intrusive, right? We'll have large equipment out there, especially if we're open cutting, right? There'll be lane closures, all of that stuff. But when you actually like, cut in and tie into the pipe, like, we, we'll sequence it in a way where it's like, only like, half a day that the pipe's out. But we're still trying to figure out what the lining, because we don't do water main lining, you know, on a yearly basis, is how long is the shutdown when you line? What we heard today was, you know, when you line, you would still have to dig like, a pit here, because they still have to like, put a, you know, when they line a storm sewer, they have a manhole where they can just kind of tuck it through. There's no like, manholes, right, on water mains? So they would basically have to like, cut into the pipe on the east side, and then push it through. I don't know which direction they would do it, and they would have a receiving pit, let's say, on this other side, still in the intersection. But in order to put a liner through, they would have to clean that pipe. You know, there would be what we call like, scaling or tuberculation that's in that pipe, where they would have to, like, drain the pipe, so it would be shut down, clean it out really well, and then line it. So I don't exactly know how long that will take. My gut is telling me that the shutdown to do lining would be longer than if we did replacement, because with replacement, like I said, we can time it so it's like, half a day, we can do it at night. There's also something called a pressure connection, where we can, when we're replacing, where we can tie, we can put a valve on a pipe without turning the pressure off. So that's, that's, we're still working through that, but I don't think we're making a decision tonight, lining versus replacement, but we're, we're still working through that.
But if we do this test, we can make a choice.
Right. Yeah, I mean, the test will basically inform us, should we look at rehabilitating this pipe, either replacement or lining? I think the decision of how we do it i- is a separate decision, but we'll obviously, would need a little bit more time to go through that decision-making process.
And that test can be done without impacting?
Correct.
Anything else?
Yeah, so whenever they do the test, that, what they say is they have to touch the pipe, and what that basically means is they have to put their nodes, or whatever they call it, on the pipe, and they can either do that through a valve, or a fire hydrant, or in some spots, they might have to dig what we call a pothole, up here by the sidewalk by the school, just to basically have their equipment touch the pipe, because they're actually sending sound waves through the pipe. But otherwise, the water's still flowing and all that, it doesn't change anything, otherwise.
All right. Alderman Walter.
Thanks. So, Byron, so if we did the testing, I'm going to follow up on what City Manager Wishes said. We do the testing and it comes back that this pipe underneath this roadway in the purple area has a couple years of remaining service life, that's a no-brainer, we're going to push the project back. The worst-case scenario is like, 10 years out, 10 or 15 years out. We don't want to go in and tear up a brand-new intersection that's 10 years old, right? Or, it'll be an infant intersection, it won't be brand-new, but it'll be 10 years old. If we needed to say, move the pipe, say, 10 years from now, we wanted to move that pipe, that northeast corner of that intersection is wide open, could we build a new pipe outside of the construction zone, do all the work in the shoulder areas, and not damage the intersection?
A bypass.
Correct.
Doctor, a bypass.
Yeah. And actually, when we talked about, when, when the idea was brought up at the Public Works Committee about just looking at it in general, that was actually my first thought, was trying to do like, pressure connection valves on either side, basically like, a T pointing out, brass, it would be closed off, right? But then in the future, we could just tie into that, and then bypass it and shut it down. I mean, that's possible, that takes a decent amount of like, design to kind of figure out, just to make sure everything's sequenced, but it's potentially possible.
So, but, it's, if we find out that this section of pipe has 10 years of service life, then the remaining Wesley section of pipe, east of this intersection, is also going to be a similar situation, because it's all, it was all built at the same time, that, that, that big run of pipe.
Correct, it's all.
So, you're looking at replacing pipe from Route 41, from US 41, all the way over to the high school. And so now, putting the pipe in at that time is, again, a no-brainer. It, it becomes a big project, but it is a big project.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure if a bypass would be needed going to the east, I mean, like, at the intersection, yeah, because that's so, so hard for traffic control further to the east, you know, if it's off.
Oh, no, no, the bypass, so it would come down the middle of Wesley Road, and then come to the bypass, go around the new intersection.
Yeah. It, it's possible, it would take some design. Yeah.
Pardon me, but I think we're devolving into Public Works nerd-dom here. The, I think we need to get back to a relatively simple decision, and that is, to test or not to test? That is the question. Before we move forward, Alderman Weber noticed that you were here.
Thank you. I think data is important, it should drive our decision-making, so I would be in favor of that. Just a comment, though, I hate to delay this project any longer than it needs to be. Some of these projects in the fourth ward have been on the works for a long, long time. So, as long as we, you know, have our, you know, plan to move as quickly as we can, I think that's great. But, data's really important, so I would recommend that.
Others? Who did? Alderman Powers.
Just one more question. So was I correct that this is broken twice in the last year?
I know five overall, east of the booster station.
East of the station, but.
I mean, the booster station's only a couple hundred feet from where the intersection, but everything's been east of there, correct?
Okay. So we've had two breaks in a year, and a water boiling order because of one of them?
Correct.
That sounds like data to me, but I yield back to more responsible people.
Alderman Clemmons, did you have something? Tests would get done, and we get the results in early January, and we can make a decision at that time.
Yep, that's correct.
All right. I think we are, is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on it? All right. Then, at this time, I'm like, well, I guess we have to decide what option we want to do, so I'm going to go ahead and suggest that we propose, and tell me if I'm doing this incorrectly, option two, which is the testing, because my sense is, there's general support for doing that.
And, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Kurt, I don't know that that requires a formal vote, because really, we're just seeking direction to bring back a proposal at the next meeting. So if there's general consensus that you'd like to see that, we'll go ahead, get a quote for that, and have it on your December 2nd agenda. I would ask, this is a question for, for Byron to clarify, either way, do we approve of the IDOT agreement to proceed, whether the project moves forward with the letting and bid opening in January, or even if it's delayed a year, is that approval still sought tonight?
I mean, if we already knew that we were going to delay the project, then I would not need the approval tonight, but if we are trying to get on the letting while we're testing for other information, then yes, I would need the approval of the funding agreement tonight, because technically, I think it's due like, November 26, so like, next.
So I would recommend council take action on that this evening.
Okay. But this time, then, I'm going to ask for a motion of approval for a resolution for a joint funding agreement for federally funded construction of the State of Illinois Department of Transportation, for the construction of the Waukegan and Wesley Intersection Project Section Number 1300095-00-CH, for a local match estimated at $982,100, and authorize the city manager to execute required agreements and additional paperwork as required by IDOT-related work on this project. Have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
This will be a roll-call vote.
Alderman Bathbell?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Bassbell?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Bathbell?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Bassbell?
Aye.
Eight yays, zero nay, motion carries.
Very good. The next item on the agenda is items for omnibus vote, consideration of which there are nine. As always, if there are any items that the alderman would like removed or taken separately, please notify me after I have completed my reading. Number one, approval of a resolution of appreciation for retiring members of boards and commissions as follows. This is Cemetery Commission Robert Thornbow and Robert Warabo. Item two, consideration of a request to waive the fidelity bond requirement in connection with the holding of raffles in the City of Lake Forest for the School of St. Mary, approved by motion. Item three, approval of a finance recommendation to waive the RFP process and authorize a contract for credit card processing to BSNA for the city's financial software, Card Connect for the Recreation Department, and Gulf Now for the Gulf Department payment operations. Item four, approval of a one-year contract with American Printing Technologies for processing vehicle licenses, in the amount not to exceed $40,000. Item five, approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute agreements pertaining to settlement of the 3MPFAS class action lawsuit. Item six, approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a settlement agreement with Monsanto Company regarding PCB contamination of stormwater. Item seven, consideration of a recommendation from the Public Works Committee to approve a resolution authorizing the city to join the Illinois Water, Wastewater Agency Response Network. Item eight, approval of a purchase for a Toro Dingo TX1000 from Russo Power in the amount of $35,000 via the National Sourcewell Bid. And finally, item nine, consideration of a recommendation from staff to approve a resolution accepting the remaining public improvements in the Oak Knoll Woodlands subdivision, approved by motion. Are there any items the alderman would like removed or taken separately? All right, hearing none, may I have a, a motion to approve the nine omnibus items as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Roll-call vote.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Bassbell?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Bassbell?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Eight yays, zero nay, motion carries.
Very good. The next item on the agenda is items for omnibus vote, consideration of which there are nine, as always, if there are any items that the alderman would like removed or taken separately, please notify me after I have completed my reading. Number one, approval of a resolution of appreciation for retiring members of boards and commissions as follows. This is Cemetery Commission Robert Thornbow and Robert Warabo. Item two, consideration of a request to waive the fidelity bond requirement in connection with the holding of raffles in the City of Lake Forest for the School of St. Mary, approved by motion. Item three, approval of a finance recommendation to waive the RFP process and authorize a contract for credit card processing to BSNA for the city's financial software, Card Connect for the Recreation Department, and Gulf Now for the Gulf Department payment operations. Item four, approval of a one-year contract with American Printing Technologies for processing vehicle licenses, in the amount not to exceed $40,000. Item five, approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute agreements pertaining to settlement of the 3MPFAS class action lawsuit. Item six, approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a settlement agreement with Monsanto Company regarding PCB contamination of stormwater. Item seven, consideration of a recommendation from the Public Works Committee to approve a resolution authorizing the city to join the Illinois Water, Wastewater Agency Response Network. Item eight, approval of a purchase for a Toro Dingo TX1000 from Russo Power in the amount of $35,000 via the National Sourcewell Bid. And finally, item nine, consideration of a recommendation from staff to approve a resolution accepting the remaining public improvements in the Oak Knoll Woodlands subdivision, approved by motion. Are there any items the alderman would like removed or taken separately? All right, hearing none, may I have a, a motion to approve the nine omnibus items as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Roll-call vote.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Bassbell?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Bassbell?
Aye.
Alderman Webber?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.